Good evening, everyone. And are we on Zoom?
We are on Zoom.
Zoom, okay.
Okay.
Zoom, okay. All right, so we are on Zoom and we are recording. So good evening, everyone. I will call the Monday, April regular meeting in Narberth Plating Commission to order. I'll record for all planning commissioners. Counselor, there is no amendment. I'm with one person. Agenda for the evening, we have a lot, two or three zoning amendments to discuss. The accessory dwelling units amendment, which was advertised. And then two small technical changes to our amendment since we last looked at it. So I suspect that one. We have a new zoning amendment proposed by council. The regulation of the creation of a new land use called regulated businesses. I'm not sure whether that's formally been advertised yet. But we will get clarification of that because I believe our council president Fred Bush is on the line to answer any questions they may have about that proposed ordinance. And then we have an updated ordinance, which I am working with the solicitor.
I reboot yourself.
How many members of the public are with us on Zoom? Can you tell?
Chloe's here. Council persons Bush and Winston are here. That's it.
Okay, so we'll reflect that three members of the public are attending. Our team members of the public are attending by Zoom. And Chloe Moore, our consultant from Montgomery County Plating Commission, is also attending by Zoom. And Kevin Walsh and Eric Johnson will join us at 8:00, which is when we will discuss that before Team Montgomery. We'll schedule them because Kevin is not available. The announcements, updates, and then through the zoning amendments before we, until 8:00, and then we will table whatever's on discussing, discuss 7:14. It's a 7:15, I believe, 7:14 Montgomery, as I come back to that. So in terms of announcements and updates, we do not have any updates to report aside from what I will report during the discussion of the zoning amendments. So I will move to review of March minutes, which were sent to you this afternoon. We sent a draft of the minutes as recorded by our secretary with some recommended changes that I made. And I believe Adam wrote me an email and he said that the changes were acceptable. So I would like to see confirm have all members of the commission received or reviewed those minutes.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions or suggestions they would like to offer about the minutes? Okay, so I would like to call Officer Second.
Second.
Dave Brower. So the minutes have been reviewed and seconded. Any further discussion of the minutes as presented by the secretary amended by my notes? All in favor of approving the minutes? That's all in favor? Let's end this. The next item of business, an update on the Town Square Station Circle project, which I would like invite Dave and Jim to spend a couple of minutes updating us on where we stand with that process.
Well, there's the, the upcoming is a, on the 7th is a bidder's walkthrough of the site, bidders for, proposers for professional services to take up where we leave off after the initial interface with the public on the subject of, of the improvements to what is now known as Station Circle.
Square.
Soon to be known.
Okay, so there's, let's walk about on Thursday.
Right. That's coming up on Thursday. It's going to be rainy day unfortunately and chilly, but we will carry on. And the group is preparing for the first public meeting on the 20th to, first of three public meetings to introduce the subject to the public. A meeting will be held here in the, in the multipurpose room. For the purpose of initially introducing the topic to the public and then to solicit comments from the public about their hopes and desires for the town square. Other than that, it will be a couple of other interactive meetings with the public. Also, a third, a little more culminating around Memorial Day. With the findings of a public outreach program. Basically what's going on, the basic outlines of things that have not changed for.
And how will the preparations for the first meeting on April 20th, I believe, how will those proceed? Are you working on this now? Do you need help from any one of the planning commissioners?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. Jim Spear was also at the meeting today with Jim Corwell and me. And I think we're, I think we're well-staffed to get things done, used to be done by that.
Okay. If by chance anyone from the planning commission did want to help, would they just contact you?
Yes.
Okay, and what we're doing right now in the next two weeks or so, just so everyone knows, is not me, what this group is doing is planning the approach and we're taking that meeting on April 20th, beginning out of public input on the vision for the future of the station. I made good comments about this one, is much appreciation to Jim and Jim and Dave for kind of taking this on. As we all know, whenever we work with council or staff, we are, you know, we're grateful for the trust they've placed in us, but it's a lot of moving parts we're made. So thank you for that. And this is a real, you know, an opportunity for us, excuse me, as a planning commission to show our leadership in gathering public input. You know, most of the time we muddle around this zoning code and we work on land use development applications, and this is a chance really for us to show our leadership in gathering public input and forward planning. And I think we'll learn about that a lot from this experience that we can apply to other issues, challenges, opportunities we see in the borough. And so I think our niche here really is to make sure we lead a good process and we get the community's confidence in the work we do. And I think that will allow us to continue this. So with that, I wish you all good luck. Yes?
I had reached out to, uh, if, in, our, uh, council and, uh, the 20th, to agree to those, you know, contribute.
I should mention too, and you may have seen that a, a little poster has been put up in various places in his borough website announcing these three meetings. And Samantha reported in Avenue 10th Avenue. At the moment, I think the number was around 45 responses were made of people who will attend. So we seem to be getting a pretty good response, but yeah, anything, that'll get more people there, we better.
Yeah, so there wasn't anything specifically directed to any target groups or things of that sort of?
No, to the community.
Sure.
The initial meeting on the 20th, it really is just a kickoff, a public kickoff to give people an opportunity to ask questions, to gauge for themselves that this is a serious undertaking, not a whimsical undertaking, that the borough council is, is invested in it to the extent of holding, you know, holding official public, not a, and not to be confused with some frivolous thing. That's basically what we're going to try to do on the 20th.
Can I ask a question about the meeting on, you said Thursday? The day, the 7th, the walkthrough?
Yeah.
How did that come about?
There's, an RFP was put out by the borough, a borough office on 1st of April, I think, or 31st of March perhaps, to a pre-selected group of seven landscape architecture firms to provide a proposal for professional services for design through construction of whatever it is that we decide to go forward with. That's another measure of the seriousness of the undertaking.
The, the RFP had a mandatory site meeting scheduled for this Thursday, also to gauge the seriousness of their participation in responding to the RFP.
And do you know if they're all coming?
Well, as, as of this afternoon, two of the seven firms had responded, which considering they only got the RFP, I think on Friday, it's not too unexpected.
So will, Lindell, they have to have their proposals in before the 20th or after?
No, I don't think, I don't think so before the 20th.
I think we gave them about three weeks. I don't have the dates in front of me.
So I'm just curious whether that meeting would be beneficial for them to attend also?
Well, we'll certainly tell them about it, that they're discussing. I think, I think truthfully that they could respond to the RFP in a credible manner without being at the meeting. One of the, one of the requirements of the scope of work in the RFP is that by the time of the third meeting, the firm will have been selected in their expected, this is the best, will first, second, to do it.
Eric? That's Michelle. Is Chloe with?
Yes. Hello, sorry. It's, this seems like the sound is great for several minutes and then it sort of gets fuzzy for 30 seconds and comes back in. Guess my timing was off there. I didn't hear you initially asking me. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. I will just say on the Station Circle, Station Town Square thing, that sounds really great and exciting. If you need me to print anything on the plotter or if there's things I can do to support your work there, let me know. Great work has been happening on this Saldau. It's all, oh, you're welcome. Great work. Are you hearing me okay?
And there you are again.
Okay. Great work.
Go ahead.
All right, here I go. Saldau. Great work has been happening on the Saldau. I know you don't see all of it and it's all not very exciting. It's mostly going back and forth, a lot of going back and forth with Eric Johnson and looking at pieces of other Saldaus and considering, like we wrote, we ended up rewriting the whole stormwater and drainage section in the design section. I think it's much better now than it was. Worked with Eric on that. I mean, he did most of that, but we, we looked at some things together. All of the sections are complete except for the purpose and intent and definitions or the, yeah, the very, the first two sections. The definitions are substantially complete, but it's a tedious process, as I'm sure you're aware, because I want to check for consistency with zoning. I want to make sure all the important terms are defined and that they're defined in a way that works with the code. So I'm working through that. There's a couple of specific questions I do have for you, but they're more than five minutes of, of looking at things, so maybe we'll save those for May and hopefully I'll complete the last, first drafts of all, of the last couple of sections before then. What I'd like to do is put up for you in a folder online that you can all access, the current latest drafts of, of all of the sections of the Saldau. And I can send out a link to that tomorrow. If you don't get it or if you can't access the files, please let me know. And I would highlight for your review potentially the revised design section and the special studies and reports where the transportation impact study is, because I think those two sections are probably the most interesting and the most impactful from a sort of planning commission perspective. But I'll put that up and send those out. Your input is welcome on any of the sections at any time and look forward to chatting about some more of it with you another time.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Any questions? Question about the setup update? Okay. So we will move on then to our next item. As I said earlier, I'd like to move down to zoning amendments and at around 8:00, we'll, Kevin Walsh, Eric and the applicants are here, we'll switch to Montgomery Avenue. Three zoning amendments to discuss tonight. Again, accessory dwelling units, which has been advertised, regulated businesses, we'll get clarification on that. And indoor development in historic district, which is still in the draft form. We have with us tonight, council president Fred Bush, who agreed to participate in my request in case there are any questions about the regulated business ordinance. Because I don't have my computer here, I do not have the correspondence that Fred and Cindy Rickards sent to me today, providing a little background on this ordinance proposal. So council president Bush, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but perhaps you could begin by giving a brief synopsis of the regulated businesses, regulated businesses amendment to the zoning code?
Sure. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I'm also having the same audio issues that Chloe was, so hopefully it won't interfere with this, but, um, so during our recodification, Narberth removed its regulations on adult uses, on adult businesses, and we really don't have a lot of regulation in place right now on some of these typically more regulated uses. And there was discussion among members of council about whether it would be more suitable to have these businesses in the 5B district, the Montgomery Avenue area, rather than in the downtown area, which is more designed around, you know, a pleasant stroll rather than center of commerce where, you know. Yeah, basically, these are, these are legal businesses we're talking about, so we have to allow them in some form in Narberth. But the, the idea among council was they might be more suited for, for 5B. So we went through, we looked at types of businesses that other municipalities are regulating. John Walco, you know, drafted a list and council members kind of looked it over and made a few tweaks, but this is mainly built on through other legislation that's out there. So that is the, the intention of this, of this legislation. And it hasn't been advertised yet, so my, my preference for a lot of these is for, is for it to go to review before it's advertised, so we don't have to advertise it twice if changes are made. So this, this has not yet been advertised.
Okay. First of all, I forgot that everyone received the ordinance, had a chance to. Maybe I should ask next. Chloe, the, your letter of approval for this ordinance text, would you like, could you take a moment, please, to summarize your comments on this draft ordinance?
Sure, thanks. There's just a number of other things, a kind of protections or precautions that we see commonly in ordinances from other communities that we just mentioned in case Narberth would like to consider. And these, I would say specifically are for adult uses. There's a number of other uses included in this list of regular use, regulated uses, such as the pawn shops and check cashing places, and that's fine, those are all fine. We have no problem with those all being in the Montgomery Avenue district. But for adult uses in particular, sometimes we see regulations related to ensuring that from the outside of the building or the street, you don't see anything inappropriate or requiring a minimum distance from schools or daycare centers, places of worship. I do realize that Narberth is a small place, but if there's some of those that feel appropriate, you consider them. Limiting hours of operation, requiring increased buffers or requiring these uses only by conditional use or special exception. And then you have to, of course, come up with what the conditions are, but it just requires an extra layer of review there. So that's, that's specific to adult uses. And then I'll just say briefly that Pennsylvania's Medical Marijuana Act, so medical marijuana dispensaries are also included in these regulated uses. And there's, written into the state law, it says that a dispensary shall meet the same municipal zoning and land use requirements as other commercial facilities that are located in the same zoning district. And most people seem to be interpreting that as you can't put anything that's more restrictive on a medical marijuana dispensary than on other similar uses. I think you could make a good case that you're not doing anything more restrictive than other similar uses in this instance, but we've seen, sometimes people interpret that as, oh, you can't, it can't be more restrictive than a pharmacy and you should just to be careful allow them everywhere you allow pharmacies. It's really, it's up to your solicitor and nobody knows, this hasn't really been tested, but it's just something we wanted to mention there. And that's pretty much it. I think we lost the planning commission for a moment.
I wonder if they heard anything I said?
I hope so, I heard it fine.
I'm glad you could hear me.
Chloe? Chloe, can you hear?
This is Jim Spear's network bandwidth is low.
I think I can hear you again.
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, let's, let's steam head while you're online. Let's roll, Chloe.
Sorry, so did you not hear anything I said there?
Pretty much.
Okay. No problem. Sorry to those on Zoom who are hearing me all over again. So for adult uses in particular, there's a number of other kind of restrictions or regulations that we see commonly in other municipalities related to ensuring that no signage or anything visible from outside of the building is inappropriate for the general public. Installing a required, they're not here again.
They lost them again. Yeah, they froze and then they left. I, so.
Okay, well, I'm going to stop talking this time.
I thought we'd solved these issues. Boy, okay. Just concerning, because I, you know, I've been doing the issue, the, the meeting's live lately, I haven't.
Right.
You'll have this explanation really drilled in nicely, Chloe, by the time this is over.
I could just put it all in the chat, a brief summary in the chat. Should you put it back in the little bowl, be?
Try to switch it over again.
Hi, everyone.
I just froze me again.
Nope, they're gone again. The planning commission members should, oh, they're there. They should have my letter. It's not that I don't mind summarizing it, but. Can you hear me? Should I try again?
We can hear you now.
Can you hear us?
Yes. I can hear you. I can't see you, but that's okay. If you can hear me, okay, I'll try again.
Okay.
Okay. Medical marijuana. Medical marijuana.
Sure, okay. So medical marijuana dispensaries, this is a new use in Pennsylvania. And there's a clause in the law as it was adopted, saying that a dispensary shall be, meet the same zoning and land use requirements as other commercial facilities in the zoning district. So that's sort of open to interpretation, exactly what that means. We've seen other communities interpret that as, you know, don't be overly restrictive on medical marijuana facilities, as well as just allowing medical marijuana facilities everywhere that pharmacies are allowed. But it's not really clear what exactly that means and I, I think what you have is probably okay. Just wanted to mention that in case you want to consider that.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about this ordinance, this draft ordinance, either about the purpose of it or the language of it? Intent, the purpose. Chloe, I have one question. I didn't see any others, any other questions. Am I correct in reading this that, and I'm just calling on you because maybe you have the best way to, section 512, I'm. the best way to, section 5121 terms defined, do all these terms get added to our general list of definitions? Or are they, like, is this just a special chapter of the zoning that has its own self-contained definitions?
No, I believe these are proposed to be added to your full list of definitions. And then if you note the definition that says regulated uses, it refers to this list. There's no other description for regulated uses. It doesn't say uses of this certain kind or anything. It just lists these specific ones.
Yeah, well, there is a definition of regulated. The reason is, I just, I mean, I have no problem with the ordinance, but I really feel like our zoning code could do without the definition of specified sexual activity. And if it went, like, we have the cell phone chapter of our zoning code, and everything about cell phones is just like right in there. So I don't know. It just struck me as sort of sad that we had to have that definition in our code. Maybe it could be codified differently. Does anyone else have any comments or?
Chloe, maybe I missed it with the, did I hear you say that medical marijuana facilities have to be permitted everywhere that pharmacies are permitted? And the second part of that, no.
Well, that's how some municipalities have interpreted that clause in the act. It isn't, doesn't clearly state that, but some people have decided, well, I think that's what they mean here is that they should be regulated similar to pharmacies.
Okay. And then what about recreational facilities? Is that something that's undefined at the moment, or is that?
Recreation or what?
Recreational medical marijuana dispensaries? I don't know what.
So medical marijuana dispensaries are permitted in Pennsylvania and recreational marijuana dispensaries are not permitted in Pennsylvania.
To answer your question specifically, Jim, the definition of marijuana dispensary in this proposed code says it is a place that dispenses medical marijuana or otherwise legally dispenses marijuana. So any place that would legally dispense marijuana at any point in time would be covered by that.
The state whether legalized recreational use that would immediately fall into this definition?
I play an attorney on TV, but I would think it would.
It sounds like it does.
If I can jump in, that was the intention, one of the intentions was that if recreational marijuana is permitted, we wanted to be ready and have something in place. I think that's why it was drafted with that language.
Fred, if I may ask you a question, when council discussed this, was there any discussion of businesses that sell CBD type products?
We did talk about that briefly. My sense is that there's a lot of, I mean, CBD isn't used recreationally. I mean, it's used in all these kind of questionable health products, but I don't, you know, it doesn't, it's not being used recreationally, so I feel like it's in a different category, even though it's derived from marijuana. It's not a, it doesn't get you high, so.
The council did not think that was necessary for that to be a regulated use, a business that sells CBD.
We did not.
But they did consider that. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a comment, which I think relates to this in some ways, since it pertains to concern about the businesses on Haven Avenue versus Montgomery Avenue. And this is something I think Jim Cornwall raised first several years ago, and it's come and gone. And that's the idea of having a mainstream manager, you know, hired by the borough in some capacity to help find appropriate tenants for the commercial district. I raise this again because this seems like an opportune subject to throw this out, and we have a couple of council members listening in, that maybe that's something that's worth revisiting. Like I said, it's been brought up several times, and my knowledge has not gone anywhere, and maybe it should.
Okay. So I guess, is there any further discussion, or can we create a craft recommendation? I'd like to do that. And I'd like to craft a recommendation that we recommend to council that we are comfortable with the ordinance as presented to us, except I would like to say that I would prefer to see it codified as the wireless communications facilities chapter is codified, as a separate chapter of the zoning code with its definitions within that chapter, except potentially for the regulated businesses. Just, and quite, so that would be my recommendation, that be codified, that we, it seems like a fine ordinance, but if it could be codified in that way, perhaps with one definition, regulated businesses carrying over to the main definitions and the other definitions in a separate chapter. That would be my recommendation. And again, I'll state my reason is I feel like there's a lot of definitions here that will clutter up unnecessarily the core definitions of this article. I don't think we want to have, you know, all these new definitions in the main body of our ordinance if we can include them somewhere else in the ordinance, like shooting range. The alma de agency. So that would be my recommendation. Is there any discussion of that?
So otherwise, you're saying that this would just be a continuation of the terms, it'd be incorporated into the terms? And that section 5121 is the definitions section of the code?
Yeah, and then maybe in that, we just ask the solicitor to prepare this as a separate chapter of zoning code, the way that wireless communications is a separate chapter. In that chapter, all of the definitions that pertain to that chapter are there. Right? And so if we could, otherwise I have no concerns about this ordinance. And if there need to be a couple definitions that cross over into, you know, Article 12, that'd be fine. But I think the bulk of these, it adds like 20 definitions, it might just clutter up our code. Any further discussion or questions?
May I make one?
Fred, how does that sound? Sure, yeah, go ahead.
So it's common to see adult uses written in as their own subsection with their definitions, and that makes sense. When I had the meeting with a bunch of the managers at my office about this proposed code amendment, there was a lot of concern that maybe it was singling out uses that weren't really kind of noxious uses, but more uses used commonly by low-income people, such as payday lenders or check cashing places or pawn shops. And that, I think if you were proposing to put those uses, define them different from the way you define other types of definitions, or we would probably have had a comment saying, you know, it's fine to have these uses in only one zoning district, but why treat them, why sort of separate them out into some different place in your code? I don't know. But there was some concerns along those lines with some of those uses that I'm just going to mention on behalf of some of the managers at MCPC.
So Chloe, my understanding, you're saying is just move those definitions into the main body of the zoning code. That's why you're concerned.
Right. Well, now I want to check how you have, I mean, do you have a lot of regular uses defined in the definitions? I think that you do, but now I'm doubting myself. I'll look for sure. Yeah, no one is going to argue with you about the adult uses and putting those in some separate sections for, like Todd said, you know, specified anatomical areas. This is not something that's going to be used throughout your zoning code. It can be its own special separate section, and that's fine. That's great. Some of the other uses are more just like regular uses, and you're only allowing them in one district. That's fine. But that may be, they shouldn't be segregated in the same way. So yeah, I guess my suggestion would be to carve out the adult uses into a separate subsection and leave most of the other ones in with the rest of your definitions. As a possibility. I don't think anyone's going to have a big objection if you put them all in some separate section, but I think that we might, you know, want to weigh in in favor of not treating some of those all that differently.
Well, I am attentive to your concerns, Chloe, but I'd respond by saying, another reason for having these definitions together is for the ease of reference by the public. And so to have to look in two or three different places in the zoning code for definitions that pertain to this particular chapter may get more cumbersome for the utility of the zoning code.
That's true.
Although I am sensitive to that, I don't feel like that's, for me personally, a winning argument, so I would not. And these are not, none of these are on their face of them, directed at any group of people. Some may be more, maybe more potentially used, but I'm not sure. And I'm not sure that, well, in any case, I'll stop there. But that's up for discussion. Do any other planning commissioners share that concern about putting these definitions?
Yeah, I think we should, I think the definitions should all be in one place. I have on my bookshelf an unabridged dictionary that I occasionally refer to. And every word, every word, from a practical standpoint, every word in the English language is in one place in that book, some of which are body parts, and other unmentionable items, not suitable for polite conversation, but I still know where to go to get a definition should I need one. And that seems even handed to me. So I would favor having all the definitions in one place.
Any other thoughts?
I agree with the integrated definition, because it is easier to reference as part of just doing a quick reference. Like, think of footnotes. Footnotes are so easy, because you're reading, and then you read the footnote, then you turn the page, and then you're moving on. I feel like we have to, I agree with Todd.
You agree with me?
Didn't you say that the definition should be an integrated part of the?
I say the, I was proposing the definitions be kept in a separate chapter, just on this topic. Jim is suggesting they should be integrated into the overall.
Okay, I agree, Jim.
Okay. Any other comments?
I tend to agree.
Okay, so I'll withdraw that part of my resolution. And let's just say, the resolution now simply to recommend the council. Let me ask one other question. Chloe raised some questions about whether there could be additional provisions related to adult uses in general. Her letter to us suggested that we may want to have provisions about signage and merchandise, location, hours of operation, increased buffers, or potentially, especially just for adult uses. Do you feel any of those comments, we don't need to hash out that tonight. The only question is, do you feel any of those comments that were offered to us do, are worthy of further exploration before council advertises this ordinance?
I think the notion of the minimum buffer distance from schools, there's actually a suitable site in the zoning zoned area, is something that could be looked at, as well as the hours of operation, for example, signage. So I would tend to agree, but I also understand that, you know, maybe there's some urgency to get this moving, so.
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
Is council going to take the opportunity to tighten the size of the sign ordinance or operation that don't strictly have to do with adult?
The only issue on the table right now is these regulated uses. And other kinds of changes could come from council or come from us. But today, it's just regulated questions. What about any other comments about that? I guess, no. I guess I would say, now that I've raised it, I would agree that there's a locational question that we should consider. There is a retail complex in very close distance to Sabine Park. You know how passionate people are about Sabine Park, and it may be important to have a locational provision that provides a buffer between any of those uses in Sabine Park. I would be supportive of that.
So would I.
That would be, I believe, the only church or public space, not church, or public space that's close to Montgomery Avenue. There's a daycare center there, too. Would you all, Jim, you're?
Well, I'm personally opposed to the idea of segregating this stuff away from schools. It just smacks of abandoned Boston. I really think that, I really think the world has moved on beyond that. The availability of pornography, for example, is so easy to be concerned about the proximity of a marijuana facility or an adult bookshop or anything else to its hot lot seems, seems like it's pandering to a class of thought that we have led.
I respectfully disagree, Jim. I don't think that if there's, I mean, I just, I don't, I'm not sure that it's that big of a deal on Montgomery Avenue, but I don't think that children should have to walk past some of those things personally.
Okay.
And so there, you know, for the notion of if it's next to a school or to a park, I mean, if there's somewhere else than that, I think that's okay.
I agree with Adam. I think, you know, if it's in the habit of travel, it becomes normalized, and you lose, you know, one loses the sense of judgment about that kind of thing, because it's, you know, part of everyday life. And so I do agree with that.
Any other comments?
The only thing I would question, I think, is the, you know, we think we know what constitutes appropriate segregation of businesses and usage, but, you know, it sort of rubs uncomfortably close up to, you know, things that are acceptable, that, you know, that in other states, they've been trying to push, push out of view, you know, public discourse and public view. I think we can trust our borough council to, you know, as they're constituted now, to come up with appropriate lines to draw. Are we always going to be able to do that? I hope those are always going to be considered. What is appropriate for the public square? What is?
This is not an advertised ordinance yet. So what if the recommendation, the council is looking for a general direction? So what if we were to recommend to council that we approve of the regulated uses ordinance, but that we would like council to reconsider the appropriateness of buffering, without telling them that we all agree that that should happen, that the council take that issue up before bringing this back? And that in the, in the kind of narrative that leads the recommendation, I can reflect both sides of this conversation, so council has the benefit of hearing different opinions on this topic.
I just also like to suggest that maybe the notion of hours of operation, if people are in a cabaret, you know, people can congregate, they can let out, you know, late hours and just generally, there could be some nuisance issues. I don't know. I mean, maybe it's not something worth worrying about, but if you're going to look at it, seems like maybe now would be the time to do so. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. How do you go with that?
Yeah, it's, you know, hours of operation speaks to age-appropriate behavior, you know, who's on the street at what time. I'd agree with what you said.
I don't know how, but just a lot of cities require last drink for bars at a certain cutoff time, right? Some don't.
That's usually state law, I think, which governs that.
So, but it's a similar idea, you know, with, I like the position.
Should we ask council to reconsider, or to consider that suggestion too? Hours of operation, where you're just comfortable, not everyone is comfortable with the location, but where even there's outdoor display of merchandise.
This is the subject of community moral standards that is always contentious across the land, and varies from one part of the United States to another, depending on and varies from one part of the United States to another, depending on social mores that are in play from one place to another. So I don't think it's a planning commission, I think it's, I think it's above our pay to wade into this pool of gray murky pool. I really do. Well, so I think that's a good idea, Todd, is to, is to kick that part of it back to, back to the borough council. I don't think, I don't think this group of seven is going to agree necessarily on this, and nor do I think we should be asked to.
But do we agree from a point of view that it's worth pursuing this ordinance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, let's just have a vote on that to make sure it's clear. Who, who would support the idea that it is worth pursuing this ordinance and that we ask council to closely consider the MCPC's further ways of regulating adult uses, recognizing it's initiative community standards that the council is best positioned to assess?
Can you repeat that one more time?
That we recommend that the regulated uses, the proposed regulated uses ordinance is, that we support the council's pursuit of this ordinance as presented to us. And that our only comment is that council consider MCPC's recommendations about further regulating adult uses, which is a matter of community standards that we are not, that council is in the best position to assess. Is that, are you on everybody? All right.
Yep.
That is close. Let's see if we get through the ADU real quick because there's really nothing to do. And then we'll take like a two-minute break and then we'll start at 7:14 Montgomery Avenue at eight o'clock. Hopefully Kevin and Eric will be able to join us at that point. So the ADU ordinance, which has been, thank you Fred for joining us, if you're still there. You're welcome to stay on, but I think, I think we, unless you have anything to add, I think that we'll move on to another topic. Are you, I'm looking to see, are you still there, Fred?
I am still there. Thank you for an interesting discussion. There are some churches on the south end of Montgomery, I'll point out. So when we're looking at the, there's the Friends Meeting House and some things associated with that, so. Figuring out radius, appropriate radius might be challenging, but thank you for your discussion.
Thank you for bringing this to us and thank you for coming tonight to provide that insight into the ordinance. Okay, so quickly, the accessory dwelling unit has been advertised and brought back to us. It is exactly the same as the ordinance we already recommended approval. The only difference is that in two cases, we changed terminology, I believe, to, from, I'm trying to see. Now that I have my computer, I'm in a little bit of a jam here. I believe building coverage, building coverage to, what's the term? Building coverage, I think it's building footprint. Does someone have the current ordinance?
Yes.
Sorry, I was planning to look this.
I think that's the.
We valued JPC copy. This is worth.
Only one of them. Collectors, I don't. Be careful.
Yes, so two cases at the top of page three. Maximum building footprint, excuse me, the maximum building coverage in accessory dwelling unit shall be 600 square feet was changed to building footprint. And, and, and. Later on, in that same section, E1, the accessory billing does not exceed the maximum building coverage allowed for accessory billing, and it was changed to does not exceed the maximum building footprint. Technical corrections because building coverage was not the appropriate term there. It's a ratio, it's not an absolute. It refers to something else. So I guess what I'd like to ask, are there any questions about this amendment? Okay, given that it is the theme, aside from those minor changes. Any second? I'm in favor. Okay, so we will recommend the approval of the ordinance as presented to us. Are Kevin Walsh and or Eric online?
Eric's here.
Eric's here, okay. Why don't we take about a two or three minute break and then we'll start at 7:14 Montgomery Avenue?
Hey Todd, at some point, I can move forward on the Montgomery Ave Business District.
Okay, we'll do that after we finish this. Thank you.
Good. Yes.
Last time I was like.
Jim's being turned.
I don't. Oh, okay. All right. I am not sure. Do you have a computer here? No, that's okay. I'm like, wait a minute, I can't recognize.
I brought a mask and then.
We're all tired of playing.
I succumb to peer pressure.
We're all so tired.
Tired, but I feel like we're going to start playing the game again.
No.
It's not going to be long.
No.
About scheduled for my second shot.
I was in there within an hour.
Great. Okay, it's going to come through our keynote.
So I can't see where we're anymore. And the pharmacist of February said, he said, you have just avoided the biggest rush.
Oh, well, that's why I'm getting my.
A lot of old people here.
Okay, super.
Hi, everyone.
Yeah.
Welcome. We're going to wait till eight o'clock to see if Kevin Walsh can join us. Right, yeah. So I want to start.
Thank you.
Can you do for your bin, Grayson? Hope you do for your bin soon. You got a hero's right away.
Well, I got it a week ago. As soon as it was off.
Could you please put back this back in, Jim?
And there was nobody there, but. I didn't report today. The place was hot.
Yeah, it was hot. Look at him.
Did the people get their fourth shot?
Well, I didn't.
All these people over 65 and quite brightly fought work. I'm going to come to a public meeting about a man, so.
Is Kevin in?
He just joined. Then you're at the bar.
Oh, yeah.
Did Kevin join us?
Yeah, sure.
Are you using my phone, sir?
No. Yeah, she's still on.
So you let her know she might need to wait enough. Let her know.
It says in our ordinance that it would be.
Okay, they can still hear us.
Hey Christina, can you hear me?
Is that you, Jim?
Yes.
How are you?
Do you want to, we are going to talk about Montgomery Ave Business District, just briefly, as a sort of a report in yesterday's meeting, but not for at least an hour.
We have, we have one agenda item we have to do first.
Did you want to stick around for that or do you trust me to just tell them what happened at yesterday's walkabout?
Or come back in an hour.
Yeah.
You can't tell.
Now we have a bad connection, Christina, sorry.
I wasn't sure what you were asking of me, Jim.
I wondered whether you were here to talk about Montgomery Ave or whether you were just watching.
Oh, I was here to watch, unless you wanted me to give any energy.
Okay, great.
All right. Okay, so let's reconvene, come back to order. And let's move to the agenda item. It's misprinted on the agenda, 714 Montgomery Avenue, tenant sketch plan review. And we have with us again this evening, the advocate, two people representing the project on the advocate's behalf. So welcome, welcome back. I think it would be useful if you, you could to walk us through what is new on the resubmission that you provided. I have a resubmission dated March 28th. Is that the most dated resubmission?
Yeah.
Okay, we do have some hard copies. Jen and Jim, if you'd like a hard copy right over there, if you guys would like hard copies, they're not stout. Adam, would you like this?
Hey, I got it on my computer.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, James gave it to you.
Please make sure it's available to the public. It will be, but we try to protect the screen. Is there a full screen?
We'll try to slice it.
Enter full screen.
All right.
Okay, so Farid, thanks for having me back to discuss the price house, 714 Montgomery Avenue. If you guys like, we have a couple photos just to familiarize everyone with the property. Area, I think it was an area. So Montgomery Avenue, you know, across from the exit to the right at parking lot. Currently, the next one, Jim, that fits pretty quick here. I think we missed the front. We have the front, obviously, on Montgomery Avenue and the rear, showing the rear of the parking lot. It's been home to the hammer shop, certainly, and hospital for a long time. We did receive a couple of review letters back from the county and from, from Pinoni, so we can go through those real quick. So Montgomery County review letter came back very clean. They commended us for addressing the issues that were raised on the last round of review letter from them. No issues there.
Excuse me, we're getting a message from someone who's watching on Zoom. Could you speak up a little, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Or you can come closer.
Yeah. So, so yeah, no, no real issues on the, on the county review letter. They commended us for making a couple of changes that they requested during the last round of review.
What were those? Could you just refresh?
Yeah, we'll get there. Removing, it's. Yeah. So those are two, and we'll get to that. We did receive a letter back from Pinoni. We can go through a couple of the highlights there of things that are not free. Quick summary, there was an issue brought up at the hallway, the trash area. I think that's just a labeling issue. If you see on the plan, the connection goes to where it's labeled trash area. Obviously, the trash is not going to take up that entire area, so it will be a pathway, you know, leading from the doorway from the connection to, you know, the parking lot. The next aspect details on the use in the, in the commercial multi-use area, which at this point, it's commercial multi-use. We don't have a tenant lined up, so until we do that, we wouldn't have any more detail on that, but it would be conforming to the existing use that was previously there. It was brought up that driveway from Montgomery Avenue may not be necessary. We feel it's necessary. There's going to be a commercial business operating there. You know, they'll be using the address 714 Montgomery Avenue. Someone goes in and puts it into their navigation to get there in their car. We need a place for them to park in in order to have a, you know, a thriving business there. The next is asking about widening the driveway on the meeting house lane side to 24 feet rather than the existing 18-foot driveway. That is something that we are willing to do if it doesn't trigger any other code issues. So that would not be a problem. And then there's one more issue raised about the, where the driveway meets, the driveway off of Montgomery meets the first parking spot. And what we will do is address that in the next round and make some adjustments to site plan to make that not, not so close. So that addresses all the new issues raised in the engineer's letter. We have not received a letter back from Kevin, the zoning officer, yet, so nothing to respond to regarding that. But I guess just high level, you know, I did want to thank Kevin. You know, I know he put a lot of time and effort into, you know, going through this property. And I think he and I worked reconstructing it over, I guess, two weeks to try to, you know, come to the conclusion on some of these things. You know, I would say high level, any outstanding zoning items that are, remain unresolved have to do with, basically with the building being defined as one building and, you know, things of that nature. So that's where, and also with the building being existing, I wanted to just reiterate that this is not new construction. This is an addition to an existing building. And there are existing nonconformities that the building has created by being built in 1803 that don't meet the current code requirements. So I just want to clarify that this is an addition to an existing building. The existing building does have existing nonconformity, so I want to just address that at just high level. So that's, if you want.
Go on, Jim.
We'll go to the next on that zoning. So the revisions made to the plan, again, remove the parking spots from the front, that seemed to be a big item, so we did address that directly. And as well as shorting the hallway gallery connecting the existing building to the addition. The other issue that came up previously was the use, vertical mixing abuses, so that's also been addressed. The area label gym is going to be commercial. This is the revised submitted tenant sketch plan. If you go to the next slide, that has a zoom in, the actual site plan, that probably is here for everyone to read. So that's my presentation, so any questions, happy to go ahead and answer.
Okay. I'd like to ask a couple of questions and then clarify a couple of things and touch on another issue that I've been discussing with Kevin. And then we'll go around and ask the planning commissioners and Chloe, who is representing FCPC about their comments. So one thing I'd like to clarify is the parking that is in the addition, is that all enclosed now? You used the word garage up there, so that is enclosed now as if it is a garage?
It was previously.
Okay, and so, for example, where people go in and out, there will be a door that goes up and down?
We haven't gotten to that level of detail yet.
Okay.
So that, that would be, you know, part of, I think that should be part of preliminary sketch plan when we go through elevations, et cetera.
Okay. In terms of the price house, as you noted in your presentation, noted on the plan, it's. it says "commercial multi-use," but "commercial" is not a land use in Norbert, and "multi-use" is not a land use?
That wording, I think, was taken off of the certification on the borough about the exit of the multi-use.
Okay.
I think Kevin did address that, and we were going back and forth and asked what to label that, but that doesn't change what the actual use will be, I guess.
I'm just wondering, like, are you, we have office, we have retail.
Yes, again, that was.
And breakfast?
That was, right, again, that was wording taken off of the certification from Borough.
So you don't have any further idea yet?
No.
You mentioned that this is an addition to an existing building, existing building is a building which has non-conformities. Are you extending any of the non-conformities that exist?
What do you mean by extending?
Are you making, are you adding things in which are also non-conforming?
No.
So I have a question about the gym. You are saying the gym will not be a commercial use?
Yeah.
However, I don't see an independent entrance to the gym unless it's underneath the balcony. Is that an independent entrance? How's a retail space, how would the gym be accessed if it's an independent business?
As of now, it's being accessed through the main lobby of the building.
So why is it smaller than it was in the last version of this that you showed us?
It's not, and we still have to work out exactly where those walls are going. But that's the general location.
Okay. I think those are, oh, and the other issue we've, and I regret we did, I don't believe we discussed this last time, but how did you determine, and if you did discuss this, I apologize, but I'd like to ask it again, sure, come on. That all of the, all of the boundaries of the lot, aside from the boundary on Montgomery Avenue, were side yards instead of at least one of them being a rear yard?
That was something we had discussed with Kevin, and that was the conclusion we all came to.
Okay. I'll turn it over, and we'll go around, see what kind of questions people have.
Do we have Kevin yet?
I don't believe we do, I'm sorry.
Because I'd like to explore that last, very odd comment.
Kevin had affirmed that at the last meeting. Yeah, we did discuss that, it was brought up.
I want to hear it from him.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what the existing non-conformities are?
The main one is the front setback.
What, and there are other?
There might be a couple others, that is the main, the main one at that issue, I would say.
So these rectangles with the X's in it, ones marked balcony, those are all balconies? So the ones along the north side, that's not area ways, those are balconies?
Correct. Any other questions at this point?
No, yeah.
Okay.
To answer your question about, I was just looking at some of the non-conformities. It's really the setback and then the frontage width because of the setback. Everything's really, everything's really related to the building, it's, or slightly.
So are there no requirements to conform to setback of meeting house lane? Of the houses along that road?
No, we did not.
I don't understand the question, but the.
The houses that are on meeting house lane are setback a certain amount, and this building, how does it relate to those setbacks?
Hey, that is not part of their, I believe actually a different zoning district. And then this just had the, it was the language with codes very specific, so it was, what is it, a? Now it's a frontage.
It's a frontage, not an issue.
Right, I didn't, I didn't second what you were saying, it's not a corner lot, so it was just simply a frontage. And then facing the.
It means all frontage requirements.
Correct.
They comply. And that was also, yeah, Kevin also.
But do you know, do you know where they are relative to what you're proposing?
We can maybe go back to the aerial that I had.
Yeah, the aerial, let's see the aerial.
Oh, there's a little, a tiny aerial up here on the front.
But it's hard to tell.
They look all pretty much right up on the street, it probably pretty much matches where we're at, and.
Where's the sidewalk?
Visually.
Is this, the side?
Sideline has integrated the curb. My houses are a setback like 80 feet.
Is that right?
An aerial, yeah.
But that's because they're porches, I guess.
You're looking at a picture, Heidi?
Yeah, I am, but I don't know if those are porches or those roofs are porches, and the actual building is back there.
Do you know how much that existing back building is setback from the side yard?
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Do you know how much that existing back building is setback, currently setback from the side yard?
It's, it's less, it's actually within.
Two and a half feet.
Two point five.
But they are the porches.
And your building's going to be 10 feet.
It's actually moving further away.
Heidi, just keep going around, do you have other questions?
Uh, no, for the moment.
Adam, do you have questions?
Not any other questions for the moment.
Okay.
Jim, or Jared, or?
And I'm kind of studying the program, but based on the first thought you made about the trash area not really being trash area, I don't want to go too far with the gym lobby setup. What, the purpose of the gym, is it to fulfill a multi-use requirement? Or is it a serious part of your program?
Both.
Maybe it's a little small.
Again, I believe that wasn't exactly the mention, that is the location of the gym. I believe it's going to be bigger than what you see there. I don't know if we can work out as we go, but it's, I believe, around 375 square feet.
Yeah.
But right now, it looks to be about 100 square feet. That's a considerable difference.
Yeah, so the walls, and the interior walls there will have to be adjusted.
I'm curious about the irregular footprint. Do you have an upper-level floor plan? That kind of explains this footprint. I'm just looking at where the stair towers are in the footprint, imagining how that lays out in a.
Basically, there would be a hallway connecting the two stair towers. Exterior of the corridor.
It would be helpful to know what upstairs' plan looks like because of travel distance to an exit looks excessive.
Everything will meet.
In other words, you don't have a second floor plan.
Correct, that's, yeah, that's not part of the tentative sketch plan.
Well, the first thing you ought to ask your architect is, how do we get from a remote corner of a habitable floor to a stair?
Yeah.
And if you can't answer that question, sir, I don't, I can't give you, I don't find the drawing plausible. I really don't. Any more than the, you know, the undersized gym. I'd like to have some confidence that it's a real, that it's a realizable plan.
Yeah, I can tell you we have worked that out and that everything will meet any kind of code requirement.
I hear you saying it.
It's been worked out.
Yeah, it has been worked out, that's not part of the submission for the tentative sketch plan, so that's why it's not.
No, but I'm, as an architect, I have to ask that question.
Sure, I understand. So it has been worked out to answer your question, and everything will meet, will meet all code.
Comments at this point?
I have a question, I mean, I'm trying to look it up in the code while I'm asking it, so maybe you'll answer. But as far as the frontage type, this is a multi-mixed-use building, is that correct?
Yes.
So it's supposed to be a shopfront, courtyard, or terrace. So what is, what is your building actually going to look like?
It's more like the storefront.
So all, it's all glass across the whole front, this is lobby?
Yes.
Well, we haven't, we haven't gone into exact design yet for the elevations. But yet, there is intention to.
Well, just like Jim was trying to find out, you know, it's just like, it's hard to wrap your heads around kind of what you're planning without.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, again, that is not part of the tentative sketch plan, so we don't have all the details worked out at this point, so, you know, this, obviously, as you know, the tentative sketch plan focuses on the site planning and the zoning. So that's what we're focused on, that's what the plans represent. We do have second floor plans and third floor plans, but they're very preliminary, but they do work out those issues that you mentioned. And regarding the elevations, we just haven't gotten into the.
No, I understand that.
To definitively answer the design question.
Well, part of your obligation, part of your mission here should be to generate our confidence that this is a real plan. And those kinds of questions, though not technically required at the tentative sketch plan phase, are required in order to get the planning commission on your side.
Absolutely, and we will be happy to provide them, we don't have them tonight because I wasn't prepared to.
Because right now, I don't have that confidence in this drawing.
I understand, I am happy to provide that to you, I just don't have it with me because, again, we weren't prepared to discuss the preliminary sketch plan during the tentative sketch phase.
See, my problem is it's very hard to sign off on a building footprint like this without knowing what's, what generated it. I mean, if it was a rectangle, it'd be one thing, but if, you know, this kind of strange shape, it's hard to imagine how the forensics work. In a way, that kind of will meet code. And I'm not saying they don't, I'm just saying, you know, at least based on my experience, it's hard to imagine how this footprint yields that.
So, I believe that the site plan demonstrates that it meets the zoning code from a zoning perspective. When we get to the building permit phase, we have to establish that it meets all the Egress, all the fire codes, all the things, but that typically isn't part of a land development process necessarily. We're showing the Bulgaria requirements, the setbacks, the impervious, the, you know, building curages, that those comply with the zoning code.
Yeah, but you're doing so with a scheme that does not look plausible.
And that, that would be the applicant's risk, that if he cannot prove, you know.
It's our risk, sir, we live here.
During the, he's going into a building permit plan, right? And to go through this process is a very costly process to go through a design of a building. What you've heard tonight is that the architect has looked at these issues. They haven't come up with the exact plan of them.
Not even, not even the general plan.
They have come up with the general.
I don't, I don't see anything here to give me the confidence that I need in order to say, okay, this tentative site plan, which we all know is a cartoon, basically. In the best of circumstances, a tentative site plan is a cartoon of a project. I don't see anything to give me confidence that this can be converted into a real project. And I, you know, potentially, you can, your architect can design a building that will, that will in the end become compliant and something that we want to have in our neighborhood. I don't have confidence, looking at this, that it's headed in that direction.
Can I address it?
Are you part of the applicant?
Yes, the architect.
Sorry. I think the difference, it's actually been very developed. And that's part of the difficulty in saying this, is we're not showing it at this point. You know, it's a bit laid out, and the massing is actually intended to be broken down so that it fits into the neighborhood scale more than a box. And that's what's generated the kind of ins and outs there. And it's been done very sensitively, but when you look at the floor plan at the first level, you're looking at the garage. And that's quite hard to read, but it has definitely been developed and code reviewed.
I would love to see that.
I think it will be there soon.
Okay, that's, would it be okay if we, I mean, I think it's pretty clear, are you?
Pardon me?
I think it's pretty clear how you feel about this issue, can, would it be okay to move on?
Yes.
To other issues, are there other issues anyone would like to bring up at this point?
Minor issue. The backside of the house, the parking comes right up to the building. And you might want to, if this plan were moved forward, have some landscape around that.
Yeah, as part of the engineer's request to look at that, where the parking spot meets the driveway, we'll also look at that as well.
So I guess, I have just one last question. So on table 13, it says the front yard setback by block is 15 feet, is that what you're conforming to?
So what, what did you say?
Setback by block is 15 feet on meeting house lane, north side.
Which, which table are you referring to?
Table 13. Section 500A-6. Doing the appendix.
Well, there's another hard copy of code, and it's thinking.
It's thinking. It's thinking. Yeah, if you just look up front yard setbacks, you'll come to the table.
Yeah, I just want to make sure there's, the front yard setbacks apply to different districts and different areas. What frontage requirement?
What page of the code are you looking for?
I was just looking at 500A-6. Yeah, 500.
It's in the appendix.
I have the code printed out, which I'd loan you, but I don't have the appendices. We have it open on our computer if you'd like to look at it.
Yep, no, I just go.
So there's the, in the block.
I would, I would look at the reference to the table, because the.
We were referring to, to answer your question, we were referring to the required front setback in table four.
This is a, this is a separate table.
Yeah, we'll get that now.
Because the whole reason for this table is because the form zoning code is trying to bring everything that news has come into the borough, into the form of the borough. So I just want to make sure, what I'm more concerned about is that this isn't coming out in front of all the houses, which, I mean, we were just looking at the aerial view and the street view, they all had front porches, and so the actual house themselves is setback a little bit, even more, but then it has a lower section, which is either usually a filled-in or a porch, but nevertheless a porch, which was allowed by the borough to be. to be into the front, their front yard setbacks. But this is now a regulation that tries to keep all new structures not coming out in front of existing structures. I just feel like that's really important, especially when you're talking about a really massive building like this.
That, that particular code section we brought up under any interview until now, so that specifically, we were referring to table four, the required front setback, five feet, three and a half to nine and a half feet.
Oh.
Minimum, maximum.
Yeah, that seems odd.
That's from Montgomery Avenue.
Yeah, but this is median.
This is, this is a quirky situation.
It is a quirky situation. I know you have more to talk about, Todd, but just one, well, okay, I'll stop.
I think if, so Heidi, table four, requirements difference, that exit required, the rules change by zoning district, right? And the front setback is three feet or whatever. So this building has to be updated and modified.
Yeah, but what about the table that I'm discussing?
The table doesn't apply to the five feet absolute. But that, that table...
Because we already just talked about how the...
So, so I can actually tell you where it was. So if you go under, I was able to find my reference. Stop thinking. Under table four, so section 5041A, subparagraph one, table four, it gives the dimensional standards, and that's 3A, 3B, 3C, 4A, 4B, 5A, 5B. We're in the 5B district. In the 3A, 3B, and 3C, it refers to the median for the front yard. For the 5B, it's three foot six inches minimum to nine foot six inches maximum. If you go to the footnote of that table, median says the median of all existing residential building types on a block per table 13 is measured from the curb line. Table 13 has a footnote to it that says, "Z 500A-6, table 13, front yard setback by block." And so that applies to the 3A, 3B, 3C district. The 5B district has a specified front yard.
Is that clear, Heidi? The rules you were referring to about a front yard setback, first of all, they apply, they apply to the front design order. Secondly, they apply to 3A, 3B, 3C, and 5.
That's not the way I would interpret the code, but that could be my interpretation.
Okay.
Based on what's appropriate for the borough.
So I understand, so I would like to, I have a couple of other points to raise, but this side, Jim, are you ready to raise that point?
Sure. So it looks like you're able to come to an understanding of the zoning officer about where the first and second lot layers are. What is the primary frontage line?
That is, that's, that's the issue that we don't agree on regarding existing nonconformities. So Kevin thinks that the primary frontage line should be at the front setback line of the facade. We think it should be at the required front setback, which is the three and a half to nine and a half feet. The, this still complies zoning-wise with what Kevin's interpretation is at this point. However, I still believe the primary frontage line should be where we show it, and that is due to the existing nonconformity that I mentioned. That, that is, you pinpointed what, what the disagreement is about.
Yeah, and it looks like you're conforming to...
We're still conforming.
Both interpretations, but I just want, is there something that you're anticipating that, that, you know, that that will become important in the future, that you're calling the primary frontage line?
At this point, it, this is all, you know, we're, that's just where it is supposed to be.
So you have no real reason at this point?
No, I mean, what that affected was, if you'll see, if you see, we removed two parking spots underneath. And that's what it affected. So I still believe we are by right allowed to have those two parking spots, even though I don't show them on the plan and are not, are not part of the plan at this point. However, you know, that's based on Kevin's interpretation of the primary, where the primary frontage line is. That's kind of my read on that issue.
Yeah, well, I get, personally, I would like to see that, you know, stripping from this plan to still set a precedent, because I don't, I don't think that's a correct interpretation myself. And I wouldn't want to push a plan forward that, that accepted that as a, that primary frontage line is precedent. That would just be my preference.
We did put a note.
Okay.
On the plan, if you look at the bottom right of the plan, there is a note regarding that, you know, it's not where Kevin said it should be.
Then just my other question is, maybe someone else can help me out with this because my computer's running a AV right now. Like, parking space size, you have them 10 by 20. I think, don't we allow a smaller size parking space?
Yep.
Did you round it? 10 by 20 parking space?
Yeah, I did want to.
You do? Okay.
Okay. One small thing I wanted to mention is the shopfront, by definition, it says a shop in the, part of the code that describes a shopfront, which is what you said the frontage would be. It says a shopfront can be occupied by one or more permitted non-residential ground floor uses. It's not, now I understand that language is vague, but I think the implication here is that a shopfront cannot be occupied by residential use, or there, or a lobby, or a, or a lounge. Having a lobby shouldn't be allowed. My interpretation of that, or revisit your storefront, your, your frontage. My question has to do with the yard. I know when I asked about a, the zoning officer, the zoning officer's guidance there, he must have asked for there to be no backyard, or else the zoning officer wouldn't have entertained that conversation. So what is your argument as to why there's no backyard? Aside from the fact that the zoning officer, that you discussed with the zoning officer, what is your argument as to why there's no backyard on this property? How can a property not have a backyard?
Wouldn't get the lines for coding. But the high-low Montgomery is a frontage. Meeting House is also a frontage.
Excuse me, can you explain meeting house being a frontage? Because if it's a frontage, then you would have to follow the, it, it does mean frontage requirements.
Okay. So a frontage is the area between a building facade and the vehicular lanes, inclusive of its building and planning component. So it's a frontage.
Right.
That's defined.
Right. But we allow frontages to be on side yard lines.
Pardon?
We allow frontages to be on side yard lines, like across the street, on the other property right across the street.
That's a corner property.
It is true, but we do allow frontages to be on side.
I think that's, that's defined, I think, as a secondary frontage line.
That's correct.
Which only refers to corner properties.
That's correct. But you're, so you're arguing this property has two front flatlines.
Right, has the frontage on, on, as a primary frontage on Montgomery, and then the other three are side yards. Because I think it was supposed to be part of the, how it relates to the frontage. We're trying to find it. It was how the lines relate to the frontage. It's the opposite. I have to be honest, I, it takes me a long time to look through this code because there's lots of different sections. And also, this has been also reviewed with Kevin Walsh numerous times, including at, at the last meeting with you all this month. This was looked at, reviewed, and Kevin affirmed that, how we have it checked.
Right, and I'm asking you for your argument as to why.
Yeah, I, we're trying to pull up here on code, but basically, it is, again, that Meeting House is a frontage, Montgomery Avenue is a primary frontage, and the other three are side, are side.
So I don't see a dimension, but if I'm following your, your argument or your logic, then that, the facade of the building on Meeting House should be a setback between three and a half and nine feet six inches. So I'm guessing it's setback nine feet six inches maximum. Is that right?
Five, it's setback five feet. And that's five feet from the right-of-way line, a setback from the curb line, another ten feet. So we're 15 feet back from the curb line. Plus your lines?
Five feet from the right-of-way line.
Right, we're five feet from the right-of-way. And we'll get a plan. There's a six-foot sidewalk. There's a grass strip, John estimated to be three to four feet, and then the five-foot to the right-of-way line, and then there's an additional five feet. So, you know, there is space there.
This is side open or required buffer strip on the Meeting House side?
I don't believe Meeting House did, Montgomery did. At which we provided.
Can I just mention one thing about the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just going to mention one very brief thing about the sidewalk, which is sidewalks look great, nice and wide on Montgomery with the planting strip. There's going to need to be a, a little tie-in of some, some type on each end of the property to attach the sidewalks to the sidewalks on the neighboring properties. Just realizing.
Well, there won't be on the east side because that is completely paved over. It's a, it's a gas station-type building.
Great. And there's only that little triangular property before you get to the next, already redone, nice sidewalk, but it does need to be able to connect in some way.
They, that's the former carcrazy.net building. They also recently paved out their whole front lot too, which I don't understand, but they're, you know, technically, that is walkable as well. So I, I don't think they'll need to tie in on either side under the existing conditions.
Maybe that's not an issue.
Chloe, do you have any other comments, by the way? I noticed you made a review letter. We don't need you to read the whole thing over, but is there anything in particular you'd like to flag for conversation?
Uh, no, I'm, that was it, actually, just the, and this wasn't in the letter because I didn't remember till after. Just to ensure the sidewalk connects to something that people can continue to walk, that's all.
Eric, are you on the line still, Eric Johnson?
Yes, I'm here.
Eric, is there anything that you feel's not been said yet that, that you would like to comment on?
Uh, no, I mean, the, the gist of my letter has to do, you know, largest comment has to do with vehicle circulation and making sure that, you know, if this advances forward, that we have the, the best vehicle circulation and the best interaction with both the Montgomery Avenue and the Meeting House entrances, and that we have smooth, you know, movement throughout the property. You know, the, but just the rest of my comments would be addressed at a future date.
Thank you. Typically, we do take public comment at some point in discussion with an application, so maybe a good time. There's a few people. We have one person in the audience and a few people online, so before we discuss a recommendation, I'd like to ask if anyone in the public who's attending would like to make a comment on this application. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. Please yourself, please, for the benefit of our application.
Sure. I'm Kathleen Appleton. I'm representing Lower Mary County.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank the applicant, Mike Friedman, for giving me the opportunity to tour the site with him. Spent a lot of time on the outside and a considerable amount of time on the inside. And I appreciate that you were, listened to some of my thoughts and recommendations about the Price House itself. So I don't want the house itself to get lost in this conversation about the addition. I see the, I see this application as an opportunity, not just to absorb the Price House into new development, but really to showcase and highlight a resource in Narburg that's been, you know, undervalued and ill-treated for, for quite a long time. You know, so to, to really seize this opportunity to, to save and to restore and to respect the Price House, so that it's not just an ancillary part of, of a new development, but, you know, that it is, that is a centerpiece of, of this development. It's, you know, it's very, it's a very visible property. And it has a lot of life left in it. And, you know, we hope that it will be around for another 200 years. It is probably, you know, it's the second oldest or third oldest building that you have here in Narburg, and it helps to tell the story of Narburg. So the conservancy is, you know, concerned that it doesn't wind up like so many other historic resources that are absorbed into new development, which is just a shell of itself. It, you know, four walls. And I think Mike appreciated that. You know, we, we did spend a lot of time talking about the integrity of the resource. So respecting the interior, respecting the exterior, my preference would be to see the porch on the eastern side of the, the building moved entirely. That's a late 19th, early 20th century addition. So, you know, technically, it would require hard review. But, you know, it does, it does diminish the, the original design, you know, the, the original massing of the house. If there was an opportunity there to use that extra area to do something more creative or to, to enhance the resource itself, then maybe, you know, you could take that. So now I would defer to the planning commission when it comes to the level, the zoning and so forth. And of course, we'll have to wait to see what the drawings, the elevations... so forth, and of course, we'll have to wait to see what the drawings, the elevations reveal in terms of design, but certainly, you know, we want to make sure that this, this very, very important building in Narburg is not subsumed by this new development. So I'll leave my comments there, you know, save the rest for preliminary plan and for HART, but that's where we are at this point.
Can I ask a question about the juxtaposition of the new to the existing? Oh, it's free for Mike or for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, yeah.
Thank you so much for coming today. You are a welcome knowledge for us as we forge ahead in our, you know, historic district ordinance. But I'm looking at the plan, and I know we talked about it last time, but I'm now looking at it again, and are you comfortable with the juxtaposition of the new and the existing? Can they touch, do you recommend that they? Is there concern about fastening into, you know, that exterior, which is an original exterior?
Well, in an ideal world, you know, I'd love to see those two buildings disconnected. I think that the house has already lost a considerable amount of context due to development, and I think that attaching a building to it really further diminishes it. No, you know, because of the, because it feels so intrusive, but because frankly, the new building would be covering elements of the old building that are important. And I think that review of the building is important. There's a, it's, it doesn't have the visibility of the front because it's not as well-traveled, but certainly in terms of its length and the size of it, it's pretty significant. So if there was a way to do that, I think that, you know, that would be your preference. It is hard to see without elevations and perspectives what it's going to look like at this point, but initially, I would say, yeah, if you put everything to it, that would be ideal.
Kathleen, do you have a sense of when those additions date to, those rear additions?
Well, the rear addition, as we discussed last week, and I know you couldn't hear a lot of the rear additions happening, at least one of those additions that are, we that are snubbed together, is 19th century, early, maybe early 20th century with some modifications. The roof appears to have been a shed in some of the old images, and now it's a good roof. So, and from the interior inspections that we did, it appears to be early 20th century, they're very, very solid stone walls. The addition on the east side is, it's Colonial Revival. It's a porch that was attached at some point when porches were, you know, in fashion. It's been enclosed very unsympathetically, so my first thought was, wouldn't it be great to see this porch removed? And, you know, you add, you add some space between that part of the building and then, you know, the adjacent property. So you kind of, you open it up a little bit, and, you know, you let it, you see the house better.
But Kathleen, the rear additions, I mean, how much of a loss or gain is it to the 19th century, 20th century rear additions?
I mean, I don't see it as a terrible loss to remove them, because, you know, you might uncover, there are original, there are, trying to remember, and I don't, I can't exactly remember what they.
This way, it was like the old porch, and then they put the wall next to it, like broke through a wall.
So, yeah, I think that some walls have been broken through, so that whatever original windows or, you know, raw openings were there may have been modified. So I think that this addition has been modified, the original addition has been modified to such an extent that its loss is, I don't think it's as much, but I think that the addition of something to that, you know, doesn't necessarily enhance the building.
All right, so if we summarize your comments, if you could make recommendations, it would be something along the lines as follows, right? Yeah. Overarching is that you want to celebrate this historic building as one of the, you know, oldest and most historic buildings in the borough, including potentially removing the non-sympathetic porch addition on the south or the eastern facade, which will give it a more of a set off from the lot line and more of a sort of courts around the building. That it is not a great loss to remove the additions on the rear of the building perhaps, and restore the rear facade to something close to its original condition. You would recommend not to attach the addition to this new structure, to the historic structure, because the historic structure would have more integrity without it, without the addition, and that the new addition should probably, I'm assuming, not have the massing overwhelm or track from the historic property with its sort of surrounding courtyard, lawns. That's it in a nutshell. And also to preserve the interior as much as possible.
Yeah, and that would, you know, I think that the commitment of the applicant here is certainly not something that this planning has any curfew over, nor has the HART had any curfew over, and putting, you know, planning, because I would decide what removal would be the variance, yes, I mean, what you just articulated would be our preference.
Do you think that adding a new structure on the rear of the lot, you know, and adapting the house to potential commercial use, continuing it as a commercial use, is likely to be sufficient to secure the future of the building for the next few decades?
Well, I think, you know, the building needs a new use, and it needs a long-term use, and it needs a sustainable use. So if this project is something that can give it that use, you know, we haven't seen, we haven't seen other plans on the table, we haven't seen other applicants coming forward with ideas about what to do with this building. And maybe it's because Mr. Friedman, you know, was the first to get to it, I don't know. So I don't know what possibilities are, I don't know how attractive that building is to other developers, but the worst thing that you can have for a building, you can have is an empty, is an empty building or an underused building. And so if there's, if there's a project, a sensible project, that can be sympathetic to use to save that building, then that's certainly something, you know, we would support, understanding that it would be of the design, the plan that respects that building. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Is anyone who's listening in on Zoom interested in commenting? Any members of the public? Is there any way that you can signal us? Can you raise your hand or signal us?
Absolutely.
Okay. If no one in the Zoom would like to make a public comment, then we will close public comment on this agenda item. Okay. So I think what we have to do is frame our recommendation council about this tentative schedule plan. And I guess what I'd like to do is really talk about, we've talked a lot about zoning technicalities, but I would like to, as Kathleen said, I think, you know, a development like this can be an opportunity to help us, in this case, to preserve one of our most important assets in the community. And so I guess what I'd like to ask you all is, aside from the technicalities we've been talking about, what does this fit, the spirit of what we're looking for in Montgomery Avenue, and what could be done, again, aside from the technicalities for this to better fit the spirit? That's where I'd like to start our conversation. We're in the group.
Well, let's take a turn back on Montgomery Avenue. The access is all from Meeting House Lane, despite the fact that there is a, for some reason that I cannot define, there is a driveway from Montgomery Avenue ostensibly for commercial Since the use of the Price House in the future is undetermined, according to the applicant, right, you don't have a use in mind of what currently.
It'll be commercially used, but.
Right, but what that covers, a multitude of.
It could be an office, it could be.
Right, if it was an office, its access from Montgomery Avenue would be unimportant, wouldn't it?
No, I disagree. I have an office for my business, and I give people my address, and they plug it into Google and come to the building. You know, 622 Lake is around Bourbon, right, and that's where people come. If I have a 714 Montgomery Avenue address, I would expect that that's where people come, and I may want a Montgomery address over a Meeting House address if I have, you know.
Do you think Meeting House Lane is a cachet that Montgomery Avenue doesn't have?
Montgomery might have a more regional cachet.
You get what I'm saying, though? Yeah, I would say, I would say, I would say the whole driveway thing is pretty questionable. So I wouldn't say that this project is in any way related to Montgomery Avenue, and the goals that are still a little bit loose, I think, but our intention to fortify, reinforce the vitality of Montgomery Avenue isn't served by that driveway. It's clearly a residential project with a, with a sort of a commercial, undefined commercial element tacked on for some reason that we don't understand.
Well, I think my, my comment for right now is, you know, looking back, we've had some very successful collaborations with developers in the borough on historic properties, and sitting down early on in the project and working cooperatively, hearing what you need to get out of the project, and you hearing what we need to get out of the project, and we have seen in several instances, at least in my mind, the project get demonstrably better because of that conversation. And I would hope that we could do that here. I mean, I, you know, put aside, you know, perhaps at the moment, the exact wording of what the code may or may not say, but, you know, but I think there are ways to further, and I'll show my hand now, my concern is the house and the preservation of the house, and how best to do that. If there was a residential use for the house, I would certainly be overwhelmed to do that and not be as constrained about this need for a commercial, you know, mixed use on the site. Probably not the right term, not, I don't know what that means in terms of dealing with the language of code, but, you know, as I've said, we've had a history of working with guys like you to see how we could all accomplish our goals. I mean, at this point, I have a hard time figuring out how this 45-foot massive building behind the house, I don't care how many indentations there are, is not going to blow away the house from Montgomery Avenue, or from Meeting House Lane for that matter. And we need to see a lot more about how the new construction is going to be handled for me to get comfort that the house doesn't become this kind of, you know, meaningless little stage set in front of this whole house. And how we get to that point where the building doesn't, the new building doesn't do that, I think is, again, in my experience, a product of sitting down and working together to have that happen. So if I have one message out of this meeting, is that I would hope, and you also have a planning commission that's willing to put in the time to do that, so I would hope we'd be able to kind of proceed in that way.
Yeah, let me, if you don't mind, let me just respond to that real fast. First of all, I discussed this with Kathleen, one of my goals is to preserve the Price House, so that's what we're trying to do here. How do you do that? That's what we are trying to figure out, right? We have looked into some of the issues you brought up. The building behind it is not going to tower over it, is something we discussed with Kathleen also, and in fact, you'd be surprised that from the way we have it designed now, the heights from Montgomery Avenue, it's not going to take over the building. We will be able to demonstrate that to you. And just in terms of working together, I think number one, I think I have demonstrated that I can, or like, talking to Kevin Walsh over the past few weeks, you know, Ed Knowles was trying to figure out some of these issues, Ed met with Kathleen, trying to figure out what her issues or wants and needs are. All of that is going to be, we're going to be required to get a certificate of appropriateness on this one historic. So your concern over, is it going to tower over, is it going to take over, correct me if I'm wrong, that should not be a concern because we will be required to get the certificate of appropriateness. And I think we're going to get one if it's taking over the building in that way. So I don't intend to do that.
Good to you.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically following what they've said, and I've already said it. I just hope that you'll respect this street, that in fact, to me, it really is a Meeting House building, it's not a.
I also, by the way, I used to live on Iona around the corner from here, okay, for many years, so I'll just state that. I know the neighborhood very well.
Okay, okay. I mean, I'm encouraged that there are designs that are yet to be shown to everyone that have a lens within it.
Hi, do you have, in addition to that, do you have aspects of this that you feel you would still like to remark on as being imprudible?
None, no more than what I've already said.
Okay. Adam, hold on. What are your thoughts? Again, the question is, how does this project meet what we kind of think our planning intentions are for Montgomery Avenue, or other aspects that they could continue to be worked on? Do you have concerns of any sort?
All right, so it seems like all the community, right, is to preserve the structure and to accentuate it. And so I think we're making progress in that direction. There could still be some improvements, there's disagreement over the driveway and so on, but, you know, there is the chance to show the building off, and I think that the details about massing are still to come. You know, the applicant seems quite confident that this can be resolved. And I personally, I would give it the benefit of the doubt at this stage. I think it's been a little bit harsh tone tonight, frankly. The borough is full of apartment buildings next door in residential areas already. That's, you know, that's what was built in the 1920s and before, so I don't necessarily view that as an incompatibility, it's just really a question of design. And I think, you know, I tend to agree with Kathleen that connecting the two buildings together seems to be forced and probably doesn't add a lot to the historic building. Again, you know, the details may, you know, resolve, you know, they may resolve themselves, but, and there's a lot of. But, and there's a lot of little tweaks to the plan that could be made, and the massing and details, I think, are, like I said, that, you know, still to come. I mean, it is using up most of the lot, particularly in the rear of the lot, it's, you know, 10 feet from all the lot lines, and then you have a five-foot balcony. So, you have like a balcony that's not very deep. Anyway, you know, there... Whether I have, you know, something, but...
What are your thoughts about those questions?
Yeah, so, I really appreciate that the house does seem to be preserved, particularly considering the danger that this house existed in for decades just a few months ago. This is just, compared to that, this is a fantastic outcome, I think, so, you know, if it were done as apparently rendered here, I think that would be a great service to the town, that this, that this structure was being preserved in this way. I am, like I said before, I'm still kind of trepidatious, if that's a word, about labeling a primary frontage line, or it's like, kind of weird, you know. Other than that, my concern really is just the transition, that there be an appropriate transition with the neighborhood on Meeting House. I think probably the setback from Meeting House is probably fine, and I also appreciate that the building is being set back from the side yard from the near neighbor substantially more than the existing garage that is to be demolished. So, I think this is all really on the right track. I wouldn't, I guess I would have to wait to see the elevation before we really had some determination about whether this new building hulks over the neighboring property, neighboring residential property. I don't really want too many big services through this way.
Good to hear, Jim.
I just wanted to comment on the, on this negotiating, the building and the Price House. I believe that this house, I've been reading about it here, is a real gem, and it's beautifully proportioned, it's built in natural materials, it is a true example of craftsmanship in its time. We don't really see a lot of that nowadays, and we're very fortunate to have this. And if I had to really just put my opinion out there about this building, I would say the only way you can really do justice to this building in its time would be to frame it in vegetation, to plant some trees, and not try to create some kind of massing competition between this beautifully modest piece of history and this new building, which we don't know what the materials are, maybe it's brick, maybe it's, do you have any idea?
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really think that, I think if you want to sell it, if you want people to occupy this, you embrace it for its charm as an isolated example of New York history, and people would love that. But I think if you try to make it part of something new and exciting, it's not going to work. I really think that this is a standalone, isolated building in and of itself, and that's what I would love to see happen. Beyond that, I was just concerned that the trash area is right next to the largest green space property. But I know that the program has yet to really truly be worked out there, so hopefully, hoping to see, you know, a better, you know, flow of spaces at that, at that area.
Are these metal units, by the way, are they condos or what?
They'll be condos for sale.
Condos?
Okay, so I get to go last. So, as Kathleen said, if we just wait for the borough, if we could assure the future of this house in a way that is as appropriate as possible, and I'm glad you talked with Kathleen, she has many ideas. None of us take the fact that there's someone in this room with us tonight who's willing to take on this property, that like... I will say, though, I don't think this is the project you want to build. I really don't. They're simply there to try to conform this to meet our zoning code, because it's a very unusual site. Our code didn't anticipate five-sided lots and our corner lots. You're doing a lot of things, I think, here are simply to, on the face of it, meet our code, and they are playing on unfortunate ambiguities in the code again, because they don't really code for five-sided lots and our, lots that have two streets and our corner lots. So, my hunch is if you didn't have to deal with our code, and you wanted to build an optimal project, you could probably do that. That's my hunch. But a really nice park it place here, which is really what the site calls out for. Doesn't call for a commercial frontage with a 225-foot square gym. Doesn't really call for a one-story hallway gallery, so it can be a mixed-use building. And it's really unfortunate that we have to go through this exercise to try to conform to the code and not try and figure out a solution here that's optimal. Now, Dave has referred to the fact that we work in a highly collaborative manner. We have, in many cases, the property across the street. We looked at the situation, and we heard the applicant's concerns, and we made a zoning amendment to address that site. You're willing to do that for projects that we think will deliver for the community. And I think here, because some of the arguments, justifications that are being made really trade in ambiguities, I have to say, I'm not comfortable voting for this, because I think it will set a bad precedent. Some of the arguments you're making, where you may feel like you have a basis for doing them, I think that it will set bad precedents for us. I think, I think a better path, because this is such an unusual site, would for you to be to apply for variance, to build what you really want to build here, which is an apartment building. Or, to apply for a condition, which the building's supposed to apply, to build what you really want to do, which is an apartment building. I think if you were to choose those routes, and propose a project that's really good, and not all like this to meet our code, you can stop talking about whether it needs to be a gym as a retail space, because it's really inconsequential, except to meet the code. You would find an outpouring of support all around this table and in the audience, I'm sure you would. And we would, you talk to other applicants, other attorneys who've worked here, they know we would move heaven and earth to make a good project. And so, I have to say, unfortunately, I would not support this, because I believe, and I think I believe, I disagree with some of your interpretations, I do not believe a building can have two primary frontages. And if Marion, if Meeting House is not a primary frontage, then that property next to the house is not a side yard, spare yard, and you have to have a 25-foot setback. And that's important, that setback, because one of the principles of this district is that whatever is developed in the Montgomery Avenue District should be adequately separated and shielded from the residential districts nearby. Nowhere in Norbert do we have a 25-foot setback, except here. And that came about because the public told us when we wrote the Form Bays code, they wanted it to be shielded from development in the Montgomery Avenue District, and that is a very important principle. That then, of course, has to be considered against the real challenge you have, because of the fact that you are working around this district building. Which is why I really think a variance route, or conditional use route through multiple buildings in a lot, which we wrote specifically for this purpose, would be a better route. Or, to approach us about other kind of code adjustments, which you think will allow you to do the kind of project. So, I'm afraid I can't support this for those reasons. And I'm going to actually take the unusual step of myself, operating recommendation, and that is that the planning commission forward this to the council with neither negative or positive recommendation, that we, that we recommend to council that this is, this is a development that we would truly like to see happen in a way that addresses the general goals of the Montgomery Avenue District, but which takes into account the peculiarities of this lot, presence of one of our most vital historic resources, and moves more towards a simple apartment-type use, separated from the adjacent neighborhood, preserving, preserving the house as the kind of outcome we'd like to see. And that, and that we would recommend to council, that council and the borough administration pursue with you a solution or an approach that might get us closer to a real optimized solution. That's the recommendation I'd like to make to you all for your consideration.
I would vote for that.
Yeah. Very well said.
You can. What do you think, Adam?
I think it's fine.
So, before we vote, I'd like to offer you a chance to comment on that.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate everyone's comments. I will say, high level, this is a very, as has been mentioned numerous times, this is a challenging property with a challenging code, I think. Those two things combined created this project, right? So, I do think some of those challenges will create challenges with even what you want at the end of the day. So, I welcome the opportunity to talk through those things with everyone, and anyone that's interested, and I just, I would say, you know, just, there are, this property is a weird property, and it's going to take some creativity and some understanding on everyone's part, I think, in order to get this developed in a reasonable way, which I am trying to do. That's really the path to getting, as everyone knows, I will just state it for the record, I mean, that's the path to getting the Price House. It's kind of as simple as that. And then the complexity comes into, you know, what does that mean, and what does that look like? So, I will say that some of the challenges with just creating this plan are going to be to get zoning. I'm talking site attributes, could potentially cause some issues, so I just, you know, I would ask that we try to work through some of those and have some understanding with just that the site has issues in that, you know, in order to preserve the house, you know, we need to do certain things in order to get there, and frankly, to have funding for it. It would really come down to, because as Kathleen and I discussed, a lot of things that we want to do, and she wants to see happen there, and that I frankly would like to see happen there, are great ideas, they just cost money. So, we have to figure out the economic side of this, and that, that's what I'm trying to do, right? And so, I'm trying to solve that problem. So, I'm happy to work together with the understanding that there are just some issues that we're just going to have to work through.
Wait, but some of those creative solutions really mean sort of unshackling you from the provision to the...
And that's one thing, I'm not so sure, that's what, we will 100% go back and look into that, but, you know, you have frontage issues, you have, the biggest issue we have here is where the building is set on the site today. That is the biggest issue, okay?
The Price House.
Yes, it doesn't...
It uses up a lot of the site.
It doesn't comply with what... Jim and I walked down the street yesterday for two hours, okay, with a group of people, and we walked down, and we said, this is what we want to see, this is what we want to see. I agree with every single thing that we said, right? And one of the major things that we talked about for this whole discussion, this was collaboration between Lomarien and Norbert, and everyone wants the same thing. And this, one of the things is having activity on the street, and I think that's what the purpose of the zoning is, in both Norbert and Lomarien on this stretch. How do you do that? You bring, this is what we talked about with Chris, you bring the buildings up to the street, creates activity on the street. We can't do that.
I don't think you heard that too many, from anybody.
Well, we did, we heard, I'm sorry, Jim did mention that we turned our back on Montgomery Avenue, which, which I don't disagree with you.
But that was in reference solely to the driveway.
But I had parking there before, there would have been activity in the front, we didn't like that, moved it in the back. My point is that, you know, we have some issues that we're going to have to resolve, the biggest being that there's an existing building on the lot, right? And I think that...
That's exactly why variances are good.
But even with the variances, what I'm saying is, variance doesn't move the building, right?
Yeah.
So, without moving the building, we'll have to see if variances even...
I think, I think the essence of what Todd has proposed, which resonated with all of us around the table here, is that part of what we see here is a wonky building, that is wonky because it's pulling out all the stops to meet the spirit, not the letter.
Not the letter.
The letter, the spirit of the zoning program.
And my point is the spirit.
So, what we'd like to do is work with you, as we have worked with other developers in this town in over a period of years, to wipe away the wonkiness.
Right, and what I'm saying is, I just want to set the expectation on board, 100% on board with that, I just want to set the expectation that the wonkiness really does have to do with the existing building where it is on site. So, I just want to be upfront, that's going to be an issue that's going to continue coming up, no matter what we kind of do.
We've got smart people in this room.
All right, well, let's figure it out.
I guess the good news is, in all those other projects that I referred to, they were all difficult sites and difficult projects.
Yep.
I mean, the Old Brick site was horrific in terms of the problems.
I'm not familiar with that, with the, but like I said, happy to discuss and talk.
Can I ask, what is the square footage of the residential upper, like, how much program are you putting into the upper floors?
About 10,000 square feet per floor.
10,000 square per floor, so 20,000 square feet of condo space, that's what you're performing for this? For 10 units, it's an average of 2,000. It's two unit, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, but it's an average gross than of 2,000 per unit, not counting the quarter.
Yeah, gross, gross.
But wouldn't you say, like, just as an opening proposition, this probably the most effective thing for you to do would be to figure out the most simplest apartment building to build here?
Yeah, I have looked at this in numerous ways, and we will continue to do that, but yeah, generally speaking, I would say yes, but...
Right, so that's something that is constrained by the code, right? And that's...
I see more constraints here, honestly, with the placement of the building than I do with the code, if I'm being honest. I just, I just do, I'm understanding. I personally didn't see the code as the real issue here. I mean, there were issues in the code, or, you know, I don't think that was causing what you see on the paper, I think it was...
What causes the gallery, let's be honest, you wouldn't have that gallery if you didn't have to have more building.
The gallery, there's two thoughts on that. Personally, for me, if I have an office in that office building, which I might, and I walk into my car and it's pouring rain out, I prefer not to get wet, you know?
It's 20 feet.
I still prefer not to get wet, but, you know, yeah, I hear what you're saying, I'm not...
There are ways of doing that, that's not a permanent structure, too.
Maybe, right, you know, but if it's not a permanent structure, that triggers the conditional use, that's where the code comes in.
Right, and that's what we want to talk about.
Right. That's probably the easiest of the issues to decide, right? Right, of being...
And like, wouldn't, I'm just thinking, wouldn't you just rather design a rectangle or a rectangle?
Well, the problem is, if, if I'm going to do it the way I want, you're not going to see the back of the Price House, you know, and that's not what I don't think is the intent. So, to me, that's kind of the biggest issue, is where the house is, again. It's, you want to see the front, you want to see the back, you want to see the sides, you want to see everything, and not put a building there, but we need the building in order to save it, so that's the trick here, we got to get around, I mean...
Well, and that's for me, for me, as an architect, thinking about, okay, so what is the footprint that you'd like to... the footprint that you'd like this city?
This is like, I was struggling with, this is, I want more than this, if I had it my way, right? But we try to respect the back of the building.
But that means, well, I mean respectfully, like, the lot is only so big, so, I mean, it can only support so
He asked me what I wanted there.
Well, I know, but, but I mean, the same
And this is what we've, exactly
You've built it, you've built out to the lot lines, there's not like
This is what we feel it can support and still respect the building. That's, and that's what we came up with, this is the plan we came up with. We spent, I mean, we spent a lot more time than any of you have on this, right? And, and so you have to put some trust in the fact that we've spent a lot of time, a lot of, I've worked on this since last, okay, when we started talking, almost on a year of me thinking about this every day, okay? So just be aware of that, okay? And I'm telling you, knowing what I know, that I really think this is a good scenario overall, and maybe we do a couple tweaks and that's fine, but I don't see this, I don't see how it, we put a lot of thought into this.
Can I just ask Jim, this is purely for my own benefit, I'm not asking on behalf of anyone else, but if, if you were allowed a fourth floor on the site, not more than 45 feet, a fourth floor, would you be open to constricting the footprint a little and having to
That is something we, that's one thing we have not looked into, that I would be willing to look into.
But 45 feet would support four floors?
And Jim, that was like one of the things, well, except they, except they've got this, the parking, but that's where it's like, you know, that's where like, yeah, if you're taking a look at the design from scratch and you're willing to bend by variances and, you know, exceptions, then it's things like, could you, is it even feasible, like can you drop the parking down five or six feet?
Yeah.
You know, in order to get your total height down, and maybe, maybe you do go to a fourth floor so that you can pull back from one or more of the lot lines.
Let me just, right now, the way we have the building height, it's at around 35. So we're not even taking up the full building height, so if we do do the fourth story, I just want everyone, again, to be aware, we're gonna hire them to make it down.
Well, I personally, I kind of want to see the massing, I mean, maybe this is still early or whatever, but I feel like this particular site is so complicated, has such an agenda behind it, that you want to look at the vertical sooner rather than later to sort of
Yeah, the way we, the way we have it now, just the general massing is, it's not updating the existing building. In fact
Yeah, we're just talking with words, it would be great to have something to look at.
Yeah, I understand, but I can just say anecdotally that if you're standing on Montgomery Avenue, the way we have it now, you don't see the back. You go 45 feet and put the fourth story on, which is not a terrible idea in terms of the site planning, it's gonna raise it up, you're going to see it from Montgomery Avenue, no question about it, so
Trade off, it's a trade off.
Yeah, it's a trade off, so, and that's my point, so what, you know, would you rather you
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Let's look.
Well, do you want us, is it an absolute no, we're not, we don't want to see the building from Montgomery Avenue?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's what you see, it's what you see. If, if what you see is, is in some way sympathetic as a background to the price house, that might be okay, you know, that's a
Yeah, so the fourth story we did
It's a sophisticated design thing that needs, that needs to be employed in order to make that happen, but the height in and of itself is not, is not
Not a deterrent.
End of the war, right?
Okay, so that's not something
It might unlock a lot of other stuff that will allow, again, I'll use this technical term, the wonkiness can go away if, you know, by using various devices, and that might be one of them.
Yeah, I, again, I was, we were, I was really trying to
I hear you, you know, yeah.
I mean, I see two separate contexts. I see there's a context for the price building and there's a context for the apartment building. The context for the apartment building is more a matter of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. The context for the price building is more a matter of getting in a historical setting, which would, to my mind, and there might be other suggestions, but to my mind is, give it from trees and, you know, create a timeless context. You can't do that with new construction because you're gonna have the materials and you're gonna have, you have a whole plethora of other things to deal with, you know, natural, like, design related things.
Yep.
So, I mean, that would be my sort of way of maybe organizing, thinking about it.
Yeah, I agree. Listen, you know, most of what is certainly the issues are, you know, from my perspective, I don't disagree with them, but they're really all preliminary plan issues. They're not issues for the kind of sketch to landscaping, is part of the preliminary plan stage, and we will hundred percent be addressing landscaping and all the requirements for the street trees and, and everything else, and trying to dress the property up in a way that, that makes sense. But I just, you know, we can't go down the road of landscaping a property in a preliminary plan, then we haven't gotten through tentative plan yet, you know, so I really want to focus on
We understand that.
You know, because otherwise I can't even get there, I can't, I, we gotta get through phase one to get to phase two. So I'm asking to get through phase one so we can get to phase two and deal with landscaping, deal with the heights, deal with the elevations and all, these are all the issues that you're bringing up now. To me, those are all preliminary plan issues, not meant for a discussion in a tentative sketch. Knowing that we are thinking these things, we've already spent a year on this thing, and that all of those issues will be addressed and that it will work constructively, but I can't start designing a building in the tentative sketch phase with no approvals and, you know what I mean? It's just, we have to go through the process, just like I'm doing, and the first part of the process is apply for tentative sketch, okay? That is to do with the zoning and the site plan, that's what we're doing. There's no real zoning issues at this point, as far as I can tell, and based on the review letters. So I would just ask that we move this forward because again, you can address these things during the preliminary plan. These are all things that you don't have to approve the preliminary plan, if you don't put landscaping or the facade or whatever, those are all issues for then, and, and so I need an approval in tentative sketch to get to the preliminary sketch in order to address those things.
Not if you harness the creative energy of a collaborative planning council.
Right.
So I think Todd has very clearly stated that he's uncomfortable approving this plan, as am I, and I think others may be also.
And I do think there is zoning, I do think there is zoning issues, unfortunately, notwithstanding what the zoning officer would have said, which is why I think, you know, I've proposed to my colleagues here that we not reject the application, but not approve it and recommend that you seek variances or conditional use process to work out development that is a little better tuned to the site, unencumbered by the, some of the zoning restrictions. And the one I'm concerned about particularly is the setback from the residential district. I think we have to rethink how it relates to Montgomery Avenue, but I'm very concerned about how plus the building is to the residential district, which is simply not the intention of considering this.
Good question. When does this go to Harb review?
That's another thing, I'm not sure where
Does it need us to recommend it?
No.
To council, to move ahead, and then, then Harb take, takes it into review, or is that separately, is that done?
I don't know what that, that sequence of actions is.
Because I'm thinking that Harb may have another take on this too.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the relationship to the price house, the existing, the new construction and how it relates to the price house is very much a Harb topic. The removal of the existing structures is a Harb topic, the attachment of a new structure, the visibility from the right away, even though technically it's in this third lot layer, it's still relevant somehow as far as the Harb review is concerned, and I just feel like that would be a very good next step also.
My understanding is that's part of the preliminary sketch.
Part of this, okay. Oh, the next one, okay.
Yeah, again, this is, this is really, this is
This is the sketch.
This is zoning on the site.
Okay.
Okay, has anyone heard anything in the last half hour, 20 minutes that's changed your thoughts about the resolution? Which is, which is not to recommend or to, we make a recommendation to council, we have to give council our advice, council making decisions about things. And so when I'm proposing to tell council, to recommend, to say to council is, we don't recommend approval of this at this point, nor do we recommend denial of it. We believe there are some zoning issues that are very particular to the site, that we think need to be resolved through variance process or through consideration of the conditional use process, which is, which is open to properties in this zoning district. And in particular, I think we flagged, from a zoning point of view, a circulation point of view, the setbacks of this building from the adjacent residential neighborhood and the existing driveway entryway as particular issues. We've, we've flagged the way that the first floor uses, while they may meet the letter of the code, it's questionable whether they meet the letter of the code, but they don't meet the spirit of the code, and this would be, this would be resolved through variance or a conditional use process.
Can we do that without saying we don't approve it because
And that we would support this fully as we have to do this process as well.
I mean, I, technically, if they conform to the requirements of the code, I don't know how we can disapprove it.
I don't believe they conform the requirements of the code. I don't believe our code allows for two primary frontages to exist, which they're currently existing here. We have more than one frontage, we only have one primary frontage. Well, then your setback on Montgomery is, on meeting houses, then if you only have one primary frontage, that means the frontage on meeting house is a side yard, which means that the
It's a, it's a frontage.
But it's a side yard.
Secondary.
It's a side lot, it's a side lot line with a frontage. See, this is where we disagree. I don't agree
See, Kevin's not here to explain his, I mean
No, but I've discussed this at length with several people, and it doesn't really matter whether Kevin is here or not, it depends on the recommendation that we would like to make to council. I'm not comfortable with the interpretation that there's no rear lot line here.
But Todd, I'm not comfortable saying that it's not a frontage on meeting house lane.
It's a frontage, but it's
It's a frontage on meeting house
But it's a side lot line. Then don't vote for the resolution, or propose a different one yourself.
Well, Heidi was asking if we can, if you're saying that in your opinion, it doesn't satisfy the zone, because it needs, if I understand you're correct, you're saying it needs a rear
Well, for example, if it's, if it's not a primary frontage line, then you do not need a frontage as in the shop front, you only need that on the primary frontage line. So you're arguing both sides of it.
Well, we're also not proposing an actual facade type at this point, that's part of the preliminary sketch also.
But we asked you about it, and you said it would be a shop front. So, okay, so that's not gonna be a shop. What I'm trying to say is, it may be a frontage, but it is a side lot line.
How is it a side lot line?
We have precedent in our code in other situations where we have
It fronts a street.
That's right, but it's a side lot line.
I don't think, I
See, we disagree, and this is what I'm saying. We disagree about that.
I don't think there's a review letter either about that, so, you know, I think to Heidi's point, you know, if you're gonna not approve this, you know, it's gotta be based on zoning and site plan, and if you're not agreeing because you don't like the plan
I didn't say that.
I don't agree with your interpretation of the code. But it does meet, it does meet the code, so
But we disagree about that, I'm afraid that's not gonna go anywhere.
Well, we can't disagree because the zoning officer of the borough
Yes, we can disagree.
Says it does
You know, we can.
We can disagree.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, but just for the record, you're gonna
The zoning officer
You're not approving
We're not going to issue a recommendation of approval, we're not gonna issue a recommendation of denial. What we're gonna say is, there are issues of this, of this, with this plan that we believe cannot conform to the code, and that a better route than us approving it as conforming to the code would be to seek a variance because of the peculiarities of the site, or to reapply through the conditional use process, which is, which is available to this site, and would allow you then to have more flexibility about how you meet these, how these interpretations are made. We do not, I do not believe myself, and I'm proposing to my colleagues, that this, that this is approvable as of right, under the code, as I understand it. Now, we've read the zoning officer's letter, and where we're, the zoning officer's interpretation, the council asks us for our recommendation. We do not have to recommend something just because the zoning officer wrote it. I'm not convinced that this is, should not be considered a side lot line or a side yard of meeting house. And if it is a side yard, that means the yard that's next to the residential house is the backyard, which means it needs to be set back 25 feet. And, and it is, it may be a technicality, but it is an important part of the spirit of this, of this zoning district, which is to segregate uses along Montgomery Avenue from the residential districts behind. It's not only in the code, it is one of the most important ideas that residents in this community expressed to us when we were writing the code, so I feel particularly protective of that aspect of the code.
So there's two, there's two pieces to that. One was your definition of yard, is the area between the purbi and setbacks and the street line. And a street line, within further define as a line of dedication in the case of a dedicated street. So I would argue that meeting house can't be a side rear, or rear yard, right, because it has to be, it came into the street line. And then if you went to the requirements about maximum frontage, it says there's a, Montgomery Avenue has a requirement for maximum width, and then it says all other frontages, so the code, you know, could have other frontages. And so our argument is, is that it's a frontage, it is not a primary frontage, primary frontage is Montgomery Avenue and the 5B district. And so it is a, a frontage, not a secondary frontage, because secondary frontage is only referred to one or lots. And it is a peculiar, I can't even say the word, in your code, but that's what the code says, and there's language in the code, and so
The code does not say that a frontage is, that is, frontage is necessarily separate from a side, from a side, from a side lot line. A frontage can occur on a side lot line. In fact, the code is somewhat ambiguous in that, to be honest, and so that's why I believe I'm not comfortable making that interpretation
So you believe the code's ambiguous?
Personally, I do, and it would be silly, but I do not
That's, I, I'll leave it at that.
I know that.
Ambiguity goes in favor of the applicant.
I know that. I know that, but it's, but I think that, I think that, I think that this is best dealt with not, I, I'm not comfortable approving that as the precedent. And I'm comfortable with it being resolved as I'm hearing word through a variance, which would be the appropriate way to approach this site because of its unusual nature. The whole thing is ambiguous.
So can I just ask you a question? So as number of parking spaces, based on the number of units that you're proposing? So that's, that's given information, that's just, that's why it's filling the site the way it is. I mean, I, I think, you know, what Todd's saying is that we're here to make a recommendation to council. If we're uncomfortable about certain aspects of what you presented, even if they meet the code, we're allowed to express that to council. And council can say, well, too bad, it meets the code, the zoning officer says it meets the code, we're gonna approve it to move forward. It's up to you to recognize that there may be aspects of the plan that could be better that either don't meet the zoning code or are fall, you know, they're not maxing out what zoning code allows. I mean, maybe we just come in from the side yard because it's a good idea, you know? This, this plan simply shows what your interpretation of the code says you're allowed to build. So this isn't the end of the road by any means. You know, I mean, I think what Todd's suggesting is that we could say to council, we're not comfortable with the plan as it is for various aspects that are problems with our zoning code, and that we need to address those issues in the zoning code. It's unfortunate that we're talking about the price house, which is an extremely important building in the borough. I wish it was a different property, so that we weren't feeling quite so sensitive about it, but that's the way it is, and we're, you know, we're kind of, I personally am tiptoeing because I, I know that, you know, if you're meeting the zoning code, we don't have much leverage to make it do something else, but I feel like you're a willing applicant who But I feel like you're a willing applicant who would like to do the right thing on the site. I mean, as you said, you've lived in the borough, you understand the borough, you understand the people of the borough, you understand why we built, designed the form zoning code, you know, to have aspects of it that relate, you know, relating buildings to the neighborhood. So, I think we could do a hybrid recommendation. I think we could say, well, it seems to be approved, approvable by the code as it's written, as an interpretation of the code could be, we also recommend that the client think of outside the box, and if there are aspects of the design that don't meet the zoning code but would be appropriate and respected by the borough and everybody else, then, then go for it, and we'll see what we can do.
That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, but I don't agree with that. I wouldn't vote for that. I'd be against that. Because I don't believe it meets the code. There are, obviously, there are arguments about how to read the code, and there are always new arguments about how to read codes, when interest is taken. I don't believe this is proper reading of code, of the spirit or the letter. I've stated, I don't think, I think it's quite possible to have a frontage on a side yard or side, on a side lot line, and that the lot line next to the residential house is a rear lot line, and that the building should be set back further from that property. I've spent three hours reading this code, and I've come to that conclusion. So, and so I'm saying rather than, rather than simply deny it, which I could ask you to consider, let's not deny it, but let's not approve, and let's suggest the best route to addressing this would be through a conditional use process, taking advantage of the multiple buildings in a lot provision, or through a variance, which would allow for more flexibility in addressing what are admittedly, you know, very difficult peculiarities of the site, including the, including the location of the Price House. That is a better route than simply, I, I'm, there are other parts of the interpretation that I'm uncomfortable with as well. I'm uncomfortable with the treatment of the frontage, the space in the frontage in, in a lot Meeting House lane is used as well. I don't, I don't really buy that that's a retail space or a business, and I think probably there are within other codes the borough has definitions of what is required for a retail space in order for that really to be considered a retail space. I'm uncomfortable with that too, and I, and I think that the real, the real solution of this is to get through a process that gets around, gets to a good solution, rather than say, oh, okay, I guess we can link at this and say it follows the rules, let's hope we get a good solution. I don't buy that. So, I would not vote for that, Heidi.
Can we put the question?
Pardon me?
Can we put the question at this point?
Sure. You're going to make a motion to put the question on the table. All right. Has anyone else agreed that we should be?
I think it's time to do that.
We need to restate it so that we all.
My recommendation to my colleagues is that we neither recommend the approvals of this tentative sketch plan nor deny it, and that we recommend that there are interpretations of the zoning code that we do not agree with, and difficulties with the zoning code that should be resolved through variance process or through a conditional use process, taking advantage of the provisions that allow for multiple buildings on a lot.
You go so fast, I can't take my breath.
Each time I say it, it comes up different.
I'm trying to get it down here.
My proposal on the table, my colleagues are going to consider, is that we neither, we, we, our recommendation to council is to neither, is that we would not approve or deny this tentative sketch plan.
We acknowledge there are different interpretations of the zoning code, is what you said, right?
What I would say is, is that we do not agree with the interpretation that this meets our zoning code, that's the resolution, and that we also find that there are peculiarities of our, of this site that make it difficult to apply the zoning code to this site. And that the best path for resolving this is through a variance process or a conditional use process, taking advantage of the multiple buildings on a lot provision that is afforded to this zoning district.
I'll buy that.
Pardon me?
I'll buy that.
Further, should we have to choose that route, we will fully support efforts to appropriately develop this site. It's hard to mention. I think we've expressed nothing but willingness to kind of get around the table and figure these problems out and come up with a better plan.
We would fully support what, say again?
We're the applicant to follow one of these processes. We would fully support efforts to appropriately develop this site.
We neither recommend nor deny the application, we do not agree that this application meets the zoning code, and we find there are peculiarities of the site that make it difficult to apply the code to this site, and the best path for resolving those is through a variance process or a conditional use process, conditional use permit?
Process.
Process, taking advantage of multiple buildings and the front block of this zoning district allows. Should the applicant follow one of these processes, we would fully support efforts to fully develop the site.
Appropriately develop the site.
To fully, to appropriately develop the site. Is that it?
Yeah, that's my proposal for you to consider.
We've got a request here for future development, is that you're concerned.
I don't want to put that in the resolution. I don't think it's appropriate, although I am concerned about that and it's appropriate to have that be a consideration for a particular project. I think we can get a better site plan if we just suspend some of the zoning laws. Or revisit them, or suspend us.
That's not what you meant, yeah.
Which we've done, which we've done numerous times on these projects, to great effect. Okay, so, that would, your move to that we vote, is there a second to cease discussion vote? Heidi, you can second that so we can vote.
Sure, I'll say.
Okay, all right, so, we are going to vote in favor of that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that resolution? Okay. All right, well, we are willing to work with you. I mean, I'm sorry that maybe this didn't meet your expectations, and I'm particularly excited that you've worked for a year and only gotten to this point with us now. You talked to anyone who's worked in Norbert?
Let me clarify, I've been working on it for a year, but we haven't.
We are ready, able, willing and able to make this successful, we really are. That's all I can say, and it's been demonstrated.
I don't think it's as ominous as it sounds.
Yeah, we've demonstrated this over and over again.
No, you're going to get a better project out of this. We're going to have to bend some rules on the behalf.
Yes.
Now, let's have a motion to adjourn.
Okay. May I just ask one thing before we adjourn? Did you all look at the infill zoning ordinance? Okay, what's that?
Go on.
It is, it is pretty much what you saw before. The feedback we got from council was that council, they did not vote, but the conversation was such that there was a, you know, among some council members a desire for the cottage size to be 1,800 feet. I suspect, even though we recommended 2,000 feet, that, that council will land at 1,800 feet for the cottage size. I expect that's where they'll land.
Please, sir.
Saying that, I'm wondering, is there anything else about that ordinance? And what I'm working on with John Walken now is simply to fine tune the ordinance. We're, I mean, just like so many, this complicated thing, like, if something, if something applies to a lot with a historic resource on it and you subdivide the lot, does the new code apply to the subdivided lot? That's like what we're trying to do. We're, we're trying to make sure this language is nailed down. So, what I'd like to do is work with the solicitor to submit this to council for its consideration. We'll leave the, not the square feet for the cottage blank. We recommended 2,000, I think council's going to make it 1,800, with some of what you wanted. So, I think, I think that's probably where we'll land anyway.
His head is starting to hurt.
I just want to make sure you knew what was happening there.
I'm sorry. Off the record. Yeah, I just had to read this thoroughly enough. What happened to that hanging question about, about lots, existing lots that can be divided into twin lots? Are they eligible for any of these considerations? I think we, you know.
Only if you can cut two twins out, not if you can cut one.
Yeah, two twins out, that's a lot less than being able to cut two singles out of them.
If you can, if you can take a lot now and subdivide it into two twins, you can do that. If you could have knocked the house down and subdivided the twins, yes, you could take advantage of this. Because that is, that's, yeah, that, but remitting, we, we added a provision that you can't yield more units than you could have had in the first place based on the frontage line. So.
But that's, so if you had a single that you could have knocked down for twins, you could add one more.
Yeah, you could add one more, which, which is what you could have done before this was passed, but you can't add two more.
Just the problem I have is that, is that I think that's a big unexamined.
I did, I did examine it. I can, I mean, if you want, I can go through the math with you. It was less than 100. But it's the same principle, Jim.
I get it, yeah.
Which is that people had the ability to do a demolition and put a house there, or two houses there, and we took that away, and so, and, you know, depending, the problem, the thing is, Jim, most of the lots where you could have subdivided and put twins, you could subdivide and put a cottage now, right? So, it's very, it's a very de minimis number of extra units.
Ooh.
So, that's, that's where it will, it will come back to us after council. If you want to talk about it more.
We don't have to talk about it tonight, then?
No, because everyone wants to. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.